All right, thank you. Welcome to the Tuesday, April 8th, 2025 City Planning Commission Meeting. This is a working session. To listen or speak in public comment, please call 206-337-9723, or 213-338-8477, or toll-free 888-788-0099, and enter meeting ID 977-6634-1226. I'm going to call the meeting to order. We don't need a vote on that one. And then we are actually moving right on to public comment. This is a time for persons to speak up to three minutes about an item that's not listed as a public hearing on this agenda. Please state your name and address for the record. And so, yeah, Sarah Brooke, okay, psych, okay, all right, do we have any callers slash attendees that want to speak at this time?
Yes, there are a couple of hands raised, one hand raised.
Right, thank you.
Give me one moment to pull up a timer for our speaker. Evan Phillips, you have permission to address Planning Commission.
Hello, this is my first time speaking at one of these, so I was just making sure that this was the appropriate time to talk about the rise residential density. Is that the case?
Yes, actually, it would be because I don't think there's public comment at the at that particular item.
Excellent. So my name is Evan Phillips at 3083 Signature Boulevard, Ward 4. I'm here in support of housing available and affordable. It is known that housing is a supply problem, that building housing makes residency more available and affordable. An infinite delay in hopes of some silver bullet development that checks integrated boxes will only make housing more expensive and supply still limited. There are requests from other residents, as well as in the city council's HC5 to introduce restrictions. An explicit request for incremental increase in housing, which can be construed in many ways, or a shadow way of saying delay, as well as an explicit restriction of 35 feet in the low-rise zone to the comprehensive plan. These requests are being made now, not at further stages, that establish zoning and iron out particulars, but in the higher level comprehensive plan. The intention of these requests are to introduce building restrictions as early and as substantial as possible. Of course, the commission's hand and to lock in these restrictions, these requests as iron rules. Ann Arbor already has had restrictive zoning and difficulty in establishing density. And these prompts at this stage are to prime this new plan into following down that same road. I urge this commission to resist calls to prematurely restrict options to increase density and housing at this stage, and move forward with a plan that solves housing problems in the direction of a bright Ann Arbor future, as opposed to reinventing the current status quo and being stuck in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Manager Kelly, do we have any other callers that would like to speak at this time?
We have no other hands raised at this time.
Okay, I'll give it a few more moments. Okay, all right, with that, we will close public comment. We are going to move on to presentations, our favorite Kayla Coleman with Capital Improvements Plan Project and Process Discussion. So with that, we will turn it over to you. Good to see you.
Wonderful. Thank you for having me. Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. I appreciate this opportunity to join you this evening. I'm going to get my presentation pulled up here and then start a screen share. Just one moment.
Hank, I'm really sorry to do this. I actually just noted that one of the attendees raised her hand for public comments. And so Kayla, while you get that ready, would it be possible to actually, I'm sorry to do this, but I would love to get all the feedback we can? If that would be okay. So we'll actually go back to a public comment to get three minutes from Ms. Karen White. So thank you, everybody, for bearing with us. Ms. White, you have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak. I tried calling. None of your phone numbers work. They ask for a participant ID, and then they tell you you will be muted for the duration of the meeting. So I am doing this on the fly. I just wanted to let you know, I live with my family on the southeast side of town in a single-family home. I listened respectfully to the first public comment, which, in my opinion, missed the mark. I have attended many meetings throughout the years. I just wanted to say that as you develop a new comprehensive plan and the zoning to implement that plan, that I would really like the Planning Commission and City Council to take into account the fact that private small families, homeowners, families are competing against private equity firms to be able to purchase homes in this community. And people actually make the community not real estate, not private equity firms. And so, as you argue about whether it's three stories or four stories, and how many angels can dance on the head of a pin, I would say that is rearranging deck chairs on the Titanic if you are not also taking steps to guard against icebergs. And private equity firms and out-of-town investment in real estate, those are icebergs. They will kill community. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Ms. White. And I now see that Alex Low has his hand raised, and I, given that I allowed Ms. White to speak, this will be the last speaker. All right, Mr. Low, welcome. You have three minutes to speak. Mr. Low?
This caller has permission to speak, Mr. Chair.
Sorry, I had the wrong microphone selected. Hi, this is Alex Low, 2532 Pittsfield Boulevard. Last night, City Council passed DC5, a resolution requesting that the Planning Commission put some very specific language into the comprehensive plan. Multiple council members have assured me that this is a request, not a directive. And I believe that this distinction is very important. Had the council directed you to do this, there would be consequences for declining. As a request, however, you have the right to decline it. As an independent body, Planning Commission has autonomy over the language in the comprehensive land use plan, and councils should not be trying to politically pressure you into limiting your processes. Declining an inappropriate request is an entirely reasonable way to enforce those boundaries. I believe their correct response here is to decline council's request and come to your own conclusions. These conclusions could differ from council's request, in which case they have the right to include the further restrictions in the UDC. If your conclusions happen to be the same, it will be a stronger argument for those restrictions, despite my own personal distress for them, because they were independently gathered rather than being politically forced upon you. The important part here is that you come to these conclusions by proper process and not through political shenanigans. I hope you'll do what's right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Low. All right, Kayla, thank you so much for your patience with us on that. I just want to make sure that folks had a chance to speak. And with that, we will move on to the Capitol CIP plan. Thank you. Laura Scherz.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you again for having me. My name is Kayla Coleman. I'm the Capital Projects Asset Manager for the City of Ann Arbor. And I'm going to be speaking tonight about the Capital Improvements Plan and some follow-up, in particular, from our January discussion. So I'm hoping you can see my slides now. Do you see the intro slide? Yeah, I think I got a thumbs up. Okay. Okay, so as I mentioned, this is going to be a follow-up discussion. We had an engaging discussion when I brought the CIP to the Planning Commission in January. And there were a couple of topics that really warranted some further follow-up. And so with that, our goals for tonight are to review those questions and concerns that were raised in January and some of the feedback that has been provided. So a memo was provided to the Planning Commission in February this year. And we attempted to address some of those questions that had come up and provide additional information, but wanted to also have the opportunity to discuss that on the floor with Commissioners. So those projects in particular were the Sunset Sidewalk Gap, as well as the Fuller Maiden Lane East Medical Center Drive projects. And then we'll move into a discussion about process. So we had some discussion about how projects are being put on hold, those visionary unfunded and lower priority projects. That's been the current practice. We can talk through that and get some feedback from Commissioners, as well as the schedule for Planning Commission Review and Approval. This is a good opportunity to check in, discuss what we've been doing historically, and talk about what we can do in the future. And again, seeking feedback on that. So, and I will ask, I have a fairly brief presentation here, so I'd like to get through these, you know, dozen slides, and then we'll have plenty, we should have plenty of time for questions, and we can revisit any slides. But I'll attempt to just lay out all the information that I've got for you this evening. So in terms of projects, the Sunset Sidewalk was a primary topic of discussion at the January meeting. And as requested at the January Planning Commission meeting, staff did provide the ranking results. If the Sunset Sidewalk, Brooks to Newport, as it originally had existed, were brought back into the CIP, we provided the information about where that ranking would fall. And there are two ranks provided in the CIP. So there's a strategic value score. You've seen those scorecards previously where we define all the values that we score projects on. And that is provided separately from what is called a combined score, which takes strategic value as well as complexity and urgency into account. So complexity and urgency, we've talked about a little bit before when we've described how we score projects. Those aren't really considered values, but they're sort of other considerations that get taken into account. So we look at it from both perspectives when we're seeing the scoring results. And this one was pretty similar. So the complexity is probably what brought the rank down a little bit in compared, in comparison to just strategic value alone. When I say urgency, that's the label that's used on it in the software that we use, but it's really about funding availability. And because we have a sidewalk millage to fund this sort of project, that doesn't present any concern that would, it actually supports that this would be a viable project. There's a dedicated pot of money. They are, of course, finite, limited resources, but it's far ahead of some other projects. We see that really struggle to find a funding source. So this one has a dedicated way to fund it. And then the other update that we shared, so that was the, the direct request from January was to see that ranking result. I guess I should mention, so this is about 24, 25 in the ranking order. And you received the whole, I put a screenshot, a little snip here in the slide, but you had the whole rank list in your memo in February. There are, I think the highest rank in this asset group is 35. So of one, the rank of one would be the highest ranking, and then the lowest ranking would be 35. So this is sort of mid to bottom, the like lower half, at least, of the active transportation asset group in terms of how it compares to other projects. So the other piece of information we shared in that February memo was that following the Planning Commission discussion, there was follow-up discussion with council members who had reached out to further discuss this project. And as an outcome of that meeting, staff did agree to pursue a planning and preliminary engineering phase for the Sunset Transportation Improvement. So that will allow us to look more closely at the viability of the sidewalk placement. So you may recall that some of the discussion on a larger scale, transportation improvements discussion with the utility projects, et cetera, would potentially allow the opportunity to place the sidewalk kind of outside of the existing curb line and extend that curb limit. But what this preliminary evaluation will do for us is help us determine if that's even a viable solution. Given that there are so many utilities in Sunset in the proximity to the water treatment plant, we need to look more closely. And we, through discussion with council members, agreed that this certainly is worth looking at now to know if that's even viable, if we're ultimately going to be faced with placing this sidewalk in the more traditional location between the existing curb line and the property line, which, of course, then has the natural feature impacts that presented concern when this was originally considered. So that's a bit about Sunset. Of course, we'll come back to this with any questions later on. The next project topic that was area of focus was the Fuller Maiden Lane East Medical Center Drive intersection. So following that discussion, we were able to get quite a bit more detail on the complexity of different projects in that area that I didn't, I unfortunately didn't have the benefit of sharing at that during the January discussion. But that February memo goes into quite a bit of detail in describing each of these three sort of separate but related topics. So first one at the top of the slide, the border-to-border trail Fuller/Maiden Lane is a potential project. It had been in the CIP and was put on hold this year. It is reflected in the Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan. It would include extending the border-to-border trail under Maiden Lane and then across the Huron River to connect to the park on the other side. So that is one that has existed in CIP since 2016. The concern and the reason that it was put on hold was the perspective from, particularly what we hear from parks is that, and this is outlined in that memo, that funding border-to-border trail projects are typically prioritized where there is not an existing trail connection, so filling a complete gap in the network. This one is viewed as having a connection. This would enhance the connection, but from a funding perspective, where their, their primary funding partner being Washtenaw County, they share this view that the highest priority projects are to seek out, filling those gaps in the trail system. So this one is seen as not having any identified funding at this time. And that's part of why until there's either a viable funding source or other border-to-border trail projects that are at a higher higher priority level, if those all get addressed, then this could be reconsidered. So it currently remains on hold. The next one on the slide here, TRAT 1604, the non-motorized connection under East Medical Center Drive along the south side of Fuller. This one, we didn't find reflected in any historic planning documents. It's not part of the PROS plan. It's not part of the Vision Zero Plan. Neither of these two I'm discussing right now are part of the Vision Zero Plan. But this one was, I believe, originally a community request. And it would include taking the pathway below East Medical Center Drive and running parallel to the railroad right-of-way, and then making a sharp turn and heading to bring it back up and connect at, at the intersection. And that would be heading from west to east, I guess, the way I described that. And part of the concern here, this one was brought up while the East Medical Center Drive, the bridge project was being scoped, and through the conversations with MDOT Railroad, that they would like to pursue a more holistic project, looking at all of the opportunities for safety improvements along the railroad corridor. And at this time, they were not interested in granting the easement that would be required, or the permit, I believe it is, in order to construct this project. And due to the limited right-of-way, it can't be constructed without that permit from MDOT, MDOT Rail. So that one was put, again, put on hold this year, kind of in light of that recent discussion and hearing what we heard from MDOT Rail. This did not seem viable at this time until they are further along with the study that they had stated is on their horizon. And then finally, what was referenced during the meeting by some Commissioners, what we talked a bit about is how this intersection shows up in the Vision Zero Plan. So it is, in fact, on page 72, that Fuller and Maiden Lane is identified as a key intersection for people biking. However, there isn't a specific capital improvement plan project for those Vision Zero intersection improvements. And the rationale from staff and follow-up discussion is that their priority in addressing intersection improvements and corridor, transportation corridor improvements in general, is to focus on those tier-one and two safety locations. And those are identified through crash analysis. So looking at where there are the highest frequency and severity of crashes. There are specific, tier-one is the highest severity and tier-two being the next level. Those locations are called out on page 29 to 30 of the plan. There is a review going on to currently in process to update those locations based on more current crash data. However, staff have shared that this intersection still, fortunately, is not experiencing crashes at that, at a comparable level and severity to other locations around town that are being prioritized more highly for improvements. So that's the recap on, on that intersection. I'll move into a couple of process slides. And so I guess before I do that, the process discussion here, I'm going to lay out a little bit about kind of what we're doing now, or what, how I interpret the goals of the CIP and what the intention is of current practices. And this is particularly an area where I think that the Planning Commission has a lot, lot of opportunity to help shape process. This is really policy, and if you have a preference to see information represented in different ways, that's something that we'd love to gather feedback on. So I guess just trying to perk your attention for listening of ways, ways that you think that this could be done better or done differently. I'd love to hear it. So CIP goals, I took a shot at kind of outlining at a high level, sort of, you know, what are we doing? What are we trying to get out of this? How, what's guiding the decisions and how we run the CIP process? So ultimately, at the highest level, we want to produce a realistic, implementable, technically and financially feasible six-year plan. So we set up a CIP for six years, and my hope, and something I use as a guiding principle in this, is that it's something we can really implement. Yes, it's a plan. It will change over time. But this is our best shot at what we think we could really do. Transparency for materials, I think, is always something to continue striving towards. There's so much information out there that's provided publicly, but making it, relaying information in a way that is really accessible and can be more easily interpreted, and people can find what they need. That's important to me. Also, having a consistent and objective scoring process that reflects community values. So as you're all aware, we went through that extensive scoring update last fall, or prior to the last fall's CIP cycle. That's something that I think should be kept on the radar as a continuous check-in on, on some periodic frequency, that we don't let those scoring values get stale, and we keep checking in on how, how consistent they are with our community values. Also, this is at the, the root and the basis of the CIP. The Planning Commission's whole initiative here is to look for alignment between comprehensive planning documents in the CIP, and then staff in particular are looking at the asset management best practices. So how are we using our resources and are we investing as wisely as we can to get the most out of the limited resources we have and maintain our assets in as good of condition as possible? So related to that, to use our limited resources effectively, we seek project coordination to maximize cost efficiency, also minimizing community disruption. That includes engagement fatigue that comes along with these projects. The more we can work on multiple facets of different infrastructure needs in the same area at the same time will help to reduce that overall community disruption. And then, of course, we, a goal is to seek Planning Commission approval of the CIP. So we hope to produce something that resonates with you all as the approving body, and that you are comfortable with putting your stamp on as an adopted document. So we talked a bit, particularly with these questions about projects going on hold and wanting to know more about why are we doing that, or should we be doing that? I think that is a very appropriate discussion for us to have tonight. So the current practice is that projects are being placed on hold if they are not likely to happen within the next six years. And that could be for funding limitations. It could be technical feasibility. It could be a partnership. If we need, for example, the, the project where we need a permit from MDOT, and if they've said they're not willing to grant that, then that's not likely to happen for some number of years. The current practice is that staff are reviewing that complete list of on-hold projects during each of the full CIP cycles. So that's every other year, that complete list gets reviewed and determine whether or not any of those projects that are on hold should be taken off of hold and brought back into the CIP or actually eliminated if no longer relevant. Each year, I'm providing the Planning Commission with a list of any projects that are placed on hold, any projects that are eliminated, and all of the work that is completed. And so that's being provided in both the modification year and the full plan year, so every year. New, for the first time this year, following the January discussion, I included with your memo in February, a complete list of the projects that are currently on hold. So while staff had been reviewing that, I hadn't compiled that. I was giving it to you a year at a time of this is what's newly on hold. But a running list I have put together for that memo in February, and that's something we could, could continue to do. And I would advise we do that in the full plan years at the same time that I'm reviewing that list with staff. So how, what are our options moving forward? Of course, we could continue the current practice if that all makes sense and that resonates with you. Well, we can keep doing that. We could utilize, as you're aware, the CIP shows a six-year horizon, and then the final column at the far right is beyond. Right now, there's sort of a mix. The beyond column includes projects that straddle the last year in the CIP and spill into the next one. And sometimes there are also visionary unfunded or lower priority projects. So I guess I should say that's, right now, the current practice is kind of a hybrid. As I've tried to transition us more towards this realistic, implementable plan, I've put more and more projects on hold, but there are still some visionary projects in that beyond column. And we could say, let's stop putting them on hold and just put them all in the beyond column. I think there's some trade-offs. I would advise that we give careful thought to the wording, again, for transparency and accessibility of materials. I'd want to make sure that the public, the general public understands what that means. My fear is that when the general public sometimes sees projects in the CIP, even in the beyond column, it becomes frustrating when year after year, those projects stay in the beyond column and they don't move into the six-year plan. I think it's, it has been the case, I believe, that sometimes that beyond column gets interpreted as like the seventh year. Like after the six years, we're going to get to all the stuff that is in that very next column. And I don't want to give that impression because that's not the reality. And of course, other, if there are other ideas you all have on how to best tackle this, would love to hear that. Okay, I think I just have, I think I have three more slides. I'll try to move quickly so we can get into questions. So we talked a bit about Planning Commission role in January. There were questions about, do we have to approve the CIP? What happens if we don't? Things like that. And looking back to the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, this is sort of what we have as our guidance, that the Planning Commission shall annually prepare a capital improvements program that the, it shall show in the Planning Commission's judgment what is needed or desirable and can be undertaken within the six-year period. So I think that supports that this be a realistic six-year plan, what can, can actually be undertaken in six years. And then to see how that's reflected, and you're very familiar, you've seen this, a version of this slide many times before. The CIP process, our typical timeline is that we, staff is doing a lot of the work in September and October. December, we're kind of getting the materials ready, hoping to bring them to Planning Commission by December or January at the latest. And then February is when the finance staff are handing off their, their budget materials. So I did do some follow-up with finance. In terms of the question, we ran into this, this year of, you know, what if we were to have postponed action at that January meeting? How long do we really have? In terms of the timeline for finance, the CIP really needs to be approved in January at the latest in order for finance to be able to incorporate it into the proposed budget, because they have materials that are due in February. So there isn't a lot of wiggle room in that regard. We can look at continuing, we talked, we've talked about this before. We can continue to try bringing materials earlier and earlier to Planning Commission so that you do have more time if you need to. more time if you need to defer action. If you receive the first opportunity for approval in December and then you defer to January, then we're still on track. So I think we can always make that our goal and and try to strive for that. Another idea that we have to present to you here is this idea in this orange box for September and October, that there be a planning commission work session in each of the full plan update years and ask planning commission for some feedback on whether they see any particular projects that need clarification and whether there are high priority infrastructure needs that they that you all do not see represented. And at this point, my hope is that I will have gotten through the identify project needs and scopes discussion with staff. And so I can bring you a preliminary list of the projects that I'm anticipating to be included. I won't yet know where they fall and how they're programmed when we meet if we meet in September and October. But I can give you a status update and have an earlier check in to try to help this process along. So that's a a suggestion and something to get your reaction on. This year, just as a my kind of last informational slide here as a way of an update, that this year is a modification year. This year is sort of going to be an exception where we are going to do the planning for this capital improvement plan earlier than usual. So it will give us an opportunity to test this and see how it runs. The CIP has traditionally been completed in the fall for a couple of reasons. It it's sort of when construction season is wrapping up or getting closer to wrapping up. So there's some staff capacity benefits to that. We might know more about projects. But we are going to trial this year starting earlier and we will be working through the summer to prepare that draft CIP and hoping to bring it to planning commission in early September. And I intend to bring you a status update along the way, July, August, something in there. And I will, of course, share whatever whatever's available at that time. If I've got a draft of the plan, great. I can't promise that yet as we're trying this process out for the first time. But that will be something to to learn from certainly. So here's the final slide, just recapping some of those things that I would love to get input on. How do you recommend that visionary unfunded, lower priority projects be handled? Would you recommend any changes to how and when CIP information is presented? This is just following up on something that was, I think, raised at the January meeting and it was certainly in that memo that if planning commission would like to indicate endorsement for any particular projects, you can do that. We have a a system in our software where we could track that. We would just need a motion of the body in order to do so. And then any other feedback? So that completes my presentation. I will stop sharing for now and turn it back over to Chair Lee. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Yeah, well, we'll actually, we'll start with questions. Commissioner Norton.
First of all, Kayla, I'm just impressed by the amazing amount of work you're doing and how thoughtful you are being and doing it all. And there's something to be said for being in a city that can afford to have great staff like you to do all of this work. Because I surely would don't like the idea of the planning commission working through everything that you've worked through. I'm thinking about the requirement of the NPA that the planning commission adopt the capital improvement program and on a regular basis. We could either do that strictly by reviewing the process you're using and say, yeah, it looks great. The things that you're doing makes sense, or we could provide some substantive feedback. I don't think we want to totally give up our capacity to make substantive comments, but I but I would want the kind of default to be going with what you've worked up with the systematic process you've used. So it might be nice to have a presentation to the planning commission a little bit earlier than what it came so that we have an opportunity. I mean, there are there are a lot of us on the commission and we live in the community and we have lots of experience with with the kinds of things you're working with and we just might see something that staff missed. So there's some value for the planning commission having the opportunity. I wouldn't want to go too much deeper than that from my from my perspective, just kind of a first cuff cut laugh test. That's one comment. The second is you might think about instead of collapsing everything into a single criterion and then rancording them entirely, I if if it really is the truth that this might be a great project strategically, but we just don't have any funding for it. Breaking those two things out would make would make it a lot easier to understand what's going on here. So I think by having a single criterion, you've collapsed too much important information into one measure and it's losing some of the, you know, it's losing some of our ability to discern what's going on here. So you might think about breaking those criteria out or providing the cost factor separately so people can say, oh, I get it. What what's going on here? Those are my two process comments. I have one substantive comments. I was the one or I was one of the commissioners who was a little shocked that the underpass at the Maiden Bridge wasn't going forward because I bike through there and I'm in my whole commute. That's the scariest intersection to me. Because I look at the drivers, they're in a rush, they're not paying attention. They want to get through that intersection as fast as possible. I wonder if you could use the biking lobby. And maybe this is too much work, but maybe do a quick survey and just ask people who commute through town regularly. What are the scary intersections to them? And I bet that one would pop up. So thank goodness, no one's been killed yet, but I have this bad feeling. It's just a matter of time. I mean, just watching the way drivers go through there and don't pay attention to what's on the sidewalks. And I think since they're making the bridge bigger, it's going to encourage people to go faster. And that's more likely to happen. So especially for the biking stuff, if it's possible, find some way to tap into the biking community and get a a proactive measure of where the scary places are instead of waiting until someone gets hurt to decide, oh, that's a scary place. So that was a lot I rambled on, but you're doing a great job. I do want to turn back to that. It's really nice to have have this all presented systematically. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Norton. I've made note note of those process feedback items and the particular comment on Fuller Maiden Lane. I can relate to the transportation staff will be the the ones to consider that. So thank you.
Gotcha. Thank you. Commissioner Abrams Adams.
First of all, Kayla, thank you for, thank you, thank you to the other staff and thank you to the council members for taking another look at the sunset project. I I think the questions I'm going to ask, I think I'm going to frame up more as very preliminary feedback or comments or future questions, but they're they're on my mind now, so I wanted to float them. And when we circle back, you know, understanding that staff's looking at a more holistic project and its feasibility along that corridor, which makes sense in the interim. Eventually, if that that work doesn't produce a result that I think if anybody's happy about, we're going to turn back to the the prior project that got tabled. And I think, you know, looking at at how it's been scored, you know, I the two quick question, well, one's quick, one's a little less quick. I would ask, did the existing engineering get accounted for in the strategic part of the score, right? So it's like the raw score that it gets and then there's sort of an adjustment that's made. The fact that we've paid for a certain amount of engineering connection with that project and not other projects, I'm just wondering if that got baked in. The other the other thing that I can't quite track. And again, it isn't right because we're not considering where this ranks in the CIP yet. That's for next year. I can't quite follow the relationship between a sidewalk project score and the public dashboard I versus the project score in the CIP relative to other sidewalk projects that are in the transportation asset group, which are pulling from the same asset stream and are but they're still getting ranked against projects that are not. And that that I think I've made a similar comment in the past that that ranking, how how that's happening is secret sauce that I don't I don't quite understand. And then finally, like the third, like the three things I can't track, the third item is there was a decision made to front load this project in front of a lot of other projects that now on the list are higher. And it could be that original ranking was wrong or has been reconsidered, but there's an explanation for getting those data points to sync up that I'm not quite grasping. But I don't want to waste a bunch of time tonight on something we're going to talk about again in the fall. But I also didn't want the questions to float by without writing them down and mentioning them as something I'm going to ask later.
Thank you.
Got it. Thank you. Let me prompt the question again. Let's talk about visionary unfunded, lower priority projects. I think we've heard one comment so far that it should be segmented to unfunded versus creating different categories. Do we have any other additional thoughts specifically to that? Of the treatment? Not Kayla or Councilmember Dish, we'll go to you first.
Sorry, I was hesitating, but I
You're good.
Did want to respond to a little bit Commissioner Norton's question about what places cyclists find most harrowing. And I think I wonder, I would be surprised if we didn't have some detail on that. But I I think that what's at issue in this maiden lane thing, it's that we have terrible connectivity between the, well, I'm not even sure how to describe it geographically, but I think of it as the north side and all the rest. So crossing up to North Campus, whichever way you do it, if you do it by the Broadway Bridge or you do it via Glenn and Fuller and all of that, it's very bad. And right now, we, the council members also spoke with the B two B trail people and they gave us exactly the answer that Ms. Coleman gave us, which is that, yeah, this is urgent, but there's other, there's other more urgent things that are easier to deal with. So we just have kind of a big problem there and it might be something that it would be great if the city could lean on the university some more. I mean, the university may or may not, the university is going to make connectivity better there, but it may or may not be something that's useful to city residents and that is a biker kind of accessibility. I don't know what they're thinking about. So I mean, it just shouldn't be that that we who live up here in the north are kind of marooned and we always have half of a bad bike ride until we get to where the, you know, protected lanes are. So but I I feel like that's too much to lay on the CIP. And I'm not saying that it's not important to talk about it in the CIP. But this is such a big problem that I don't know how we'll ever get it out as a visionary but unfunded. I mean, I think we need to, we need to get some institutional cooperation here and it is something that must be addressed because there just are so many people who are probably resorting to modes of travel that we wish they wouldn't use because it is so unpleasant to bike or walk. So that's just a, I really, I don't know, I'm sorry, I shouldn't be talking about my pet peeves. But this is, I think, it just sort of a geographic issue that we're having and we just want to make it better, you know?
Thank you, Councilmember Dish. Kayla, I got a question for you. On the unfunded, does that influence some of the kind of like forecast budgeting for okay, we need to put more towards like capex reserves or does it literally just sit without any kind of input onto current budgeting practices?
It does. The finance staff is aware of the visionary and unfunded projects and in like rate setting discussions and larger scale budgeting, those would be part, that would be part of the discussion. So it's on hold from a capital improvements plan perspective in in the attempt to present an implementable six-year plan, but it's not ignored in a in a larger budgeting sense. And you don't see it reflected in the city's presented budget, but in like, yes, in rate setting or anything like that, these projects would come into play.
Gotcha. What categories would you recommend? I think you call it visionary, unfunded or lower priority. I think the breaking it out makes sense, but like, what would you recommend? What what kind of categories make sense to bring more legibility to? Who does the bike train? Or like, this is what needs to happen in order for us to make it work. Oh.
Yeah, that, well, that's the struggle because I think it's such a mix of things, like some of these are visionary and there's question about technical feasibility or whether it's an appropriate, if it's the best solution even. But we don't want to lose track of the idea. And then the unfunded ones, it's like, yes, that's great. If we had the money, we'd do it, but there's other higher priority needs. And then there's the lower priority that's like, well, you know, maybe this does have a realistic funding source. We know we could do it, but it's just not ranking as high. So they there are three separate things. You know, I I haven't thought too much about like trying to show each one of them in its own column. I I don't know if the software is capable of doing that without some further development. We can lump them all in in one column and right now it's labeled as beyond. I don't know if this is exactly even what you were asking, but
It is. And and I think like from a vernacular standpoint, I would think like aspirational versus unfunded. I think it's a little bit more like, you know, released a little bit more clear in that respect. But give us a, I I think that there's probably some level of sentiment that additional clarity is going to be helpful so that it's not like, oh, it's 2026, right? Or, you know, it's beyond, so it's going to happen. And so it's like, but I think giving a little bit more clarity to the barriers is going to be helpful. With that, we'll go to Commissioner Norton. You are on mute after five years of COVID.
Yeah. Sorry. You'd think I would know how to do this by now. Not to be repetitive, but I guess what I'm what I was trying to convey is if we're going to rely heavily on your process to be comfortable that what you've pulled together really is a good CIP for the planning commission to approve. You're so enmeshed in it and the rankings boiled down to a single value kind of makes sense to you. And you, in the back of your brain, may know why that one raked a little high and that one rank low. But when we're seeing it for the first time and all we see is the list and the single measure, a lot of that nuance is getting lost. So some way to without kind of, it's a, it's a dance. You're going to have to figure out how to not become overwhelming with information and just keep repeat everything. But providing a bit more, either breaking out scores or maybe having a column where you just explain why this one dropped out or why it scored particularly high, just a little bit of insight. So to so that when you're looking at it cold, like we were when you presented this back in January, we can see more quickly. Oh, okay, I see what's going on here. Providing a little bit more of that kind of nuanced information, I think, would be really helpful. But I'll leave it up to you to figure out how to do that.
Yes, and how to do it for 510 projects.
Yeah, and maybe
But yes, of course.
So or even just some selection of them. I mean, you know, maybe not for everyone, but just a little bit more insight, what's going on here might be helpful.
Sure. I mean, absolutely makes sense to me. I'm happy to give some more thought to how we could share more detail working within the limitations of the existing software package we have. I can, I can see what's possible to easily pull out data in a presentable way. I do think your final comment there, Commissioner Norton, with perhaps a subset of projects, I think would be really helpful that if we have that earlier discussion in a typical plan year, if I come to you in September or October and say, here's our preliminary list of projects, are there a handful of these that you'd really like to see detailed scoring on that I can highlight in the presentation? I think that's very reasonable.
Yeah.
Because then I can manually put it
Yeah, pull out the projects you think might actually raise some eyebrows or that you would like some feedback on. That would be really helpful, too. So use your use your expertise and knowledge of what's going on here to kind of pull out. Here are the projects I want you to consider because I think you might have questions about them. That would be helpful, too.
All right. Sounds great. Thank you.
I'm going to reframe that question to the rest of the commission. Would you recommend any changes about how or when or frequency of CIP information being presented to us? Any other additional thoughts regarding that particular question? If not, I think that's predominantly it. If you think of anything else, obviously, I'm sure we'd be able to send an email or reach out. Other than that, Ms. Coleman, thank you so much for your time. Great to see you as always.
Thank you. Appreciate appreciate the opportunity.
Hundred percent. All right. With that, we are going to move on to the next feeding agenda, which is going to be the discussion of the council, City Council Resolution R dash two, five dash one, two, one, Comprehensive Land Use Plan and Low Rise Residential Density. There was an attachment, please have reviewed it and I think perhaps Councilmember Dish, no, we haven't talked about it. Perhaps you could give us a little bit of a color, a little bit of backdrop. I've read the resolution, but it might be helpful just as a context setting. And then dive into discussion if that would be okay.
Sure.
Thank you.
No, thank you. The resolution may look familiar to you because it was based on the resolution that you saw and declined to entertain, which again, was completely, I think, appropriate. And the intent, this resolution is a request. It is not a directive. The wording, I I should have it, I'm not right on my agenda page right now. But I believe the wording wording is something like, or the the pivotal thing is that we is that we request a height restriction of 35 feet. Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Yeah. So the, the, the resolution recognizes that there, we are, that there has been a debate in the community over what is appropriate scale for development in low rise residential areas. And so appropriate is the operative thing here. And we suggested, or we request that you def, first of all, that you define this proposed area. So we had a discussion, I guess it was just last week, right? Yeah, these weeks are really been something. So in our discussion last week of the motion that we didn't entertain, um, the question came up whether, how, how clearly or strictly low rise residential should be defined in the plan. And we are requesting that, that, that planning commission define it in the plan. We are not under any illusions that this won't involve more, you know, comment and debate and healthy discussion when it comes to zoning. But we would like the definition to be in the plan. And then we ask that it feature a limitation of height to 35 feet, allowing for three stories. So you, you can think about that language and, and what it suggests to you. And then we affirm that, that, that idea is, you know, we were presented on January, whatever it was, 23rd or something with two approaches for low rise residential. No, I guess, I'm sorry, it was at our work session in February. In January, we were asked about three or four stories and we talked about that. And then in February, we were presented with two approaches, 35 feet or 48 feet. And we felt that the 48 foot approach was more promising for a number of different reasons. And council's concern based on scene happening at planning commission and based on the communications that they're getting from the community is that based on the in-person engagement sessions, which in October did feature a specification of 35 feet on one of the discussion boards for low rise residential. So there had been a move towards greater and greater precision in those public engagement events that people were feeling that there was a bait and switch involved. And I think it's unfortunate that people had that sentiment. We heard that here at this table a number of times and it was communicated to council in some communications. And so it may well be a bit early to be putting a firm number on this process. But there, but the number is, the dispute over the number is, is happening alongside an expression of lack of confidence in the process. Lack, a, a feeling that people are, that we're not listening to the feedback that we're getting. And so this is why council intervened because we felt that we could affirm something that seemed to be emerging, but you know, and, but what we could really affirm was we are listening. And I personally would not myself describe this as a response to a demand because there are a lot of demands out there right now. The understanding is that the process that we asked our comp plan consultants to engage in for a year before they brought us a draft, which is a wonderful opportunity for feedback to shape a draft and shape a debate. Something was emerging out of that and I don't, I wouldn't have put a, a number on it myself if I weren't feeling up against a wall. But at this point in the community, there are lots of demands. There's a demand that we pause the process. There's a demand that we throw out the whole comp plan. We are not responding from two demands here. What, in my view, we are trying to say, community feedback is meaningful. And this community in Ann Arbor, to me, what, from where I've looked at other cities' processes, and I haven't looked at them all, so maybe I'm exaggerating. But it does seem a bit rare that they actually are seeing an increase to three stories in low rise residential. Would be fine with them. And that has not been the experience of other cities. There have been ways that their complaints were, that their zoning rolled back. And our folks here are saying, no, we don't mind density, but we need it to be an incremental increase that blends in to the existing neighborhood. But it is an increase. And so I feel like, wow, that was a lovely thing to frame this ongoing phase of engagement and it, and it got lost somehow. And now the engagement is all, it's, it's a very frustrated engagement. Or, or no, I shouldn't say that, but what we're hearing is a lot of public frustration. And so this is an attempt to kind of reset at least the you're not listening part. So that's it.
No, to- totally. Thank you for that backdrop. And so, and for, just as a point of information, currently R one zones have a max height of 30 feet. R two also 30 feet. And then going on from R three to R four, it is 35 or 45 feet. R four C is 32 and then R four D is actually 120. So just wanted to give, frame that from like the standpoint of like, that's, that's what it is currently. So with that, we'll go to Commissioner Adams and then Norton next. So Commissioner Adams.
Thanks, Chair. I asked, and I, I might not be the only one who asked, but I did ask Mr. Leonard to put the topic on the agenda tonight because the council resolution, as Councilmember Dish mentioned, is not self-executing. But if we agree that the draft needs to be changed in line with the council request, I think it's imperative that we, even by straw poll, which I think we can do in a working session, direct that change. The reason is that I think our public engagement, we're up against our public engagement schedule and we're up against draft release. And I think that if the plan is released without, again, if there's support for it, without the change being incorporated, the public is going to be viewing and commenting on an outdated version of the plan, outdated in a material way. That will, among other things, limit the value of the engagement that we receive. It's going to amplify confusion that we can't afford to have, not after how the last, you know, month, month and a half, two months have gone. It's going to create opportunities for misinformation that we can't afford. We've got anonymous mailers floating around out there that people are making all kinds of claims in that we're having to deal with and our hands are a little tied in, in our ability to tackle those issues. So while my preference is us for, to handle this work and provide that direction in some other more orderly way, I think the exigent circumstances demand, if we can, talking about it tonight. And again, even if it's straw poll type discussion, because this is a working meeting and I get that. I think we need to move faster rather than slower to implement it if there's majority support to it. My proposal is that we direct staff to revise the draft to set an outer bound on low rise residential to three stories. The language in the current draft, I, I skimmed it. I just got it. I, it, it recommends four. So it doesn't deal in feed, it deals in stories. And rereading the council resolution, stories is a perfectly appropriate way to implement that direction, that the resolution mentions stories. The draft deals in stories, so that feels like, that feels like the edit. The reason that I'm proposing that, I understand that the resolution is framed as a request, but I think we need to be realistic about what that means. Both procedurally and I think also from a legitimacy perspective. The most important way that we respect public input into the plan process is through appropriate and due deference to the democratic process and views of elected representatives on the city council. The individuals who represent the people in the wards who win elections. Our meetings and the public comment that we get, the participants in our workshops, that, that's not representative. And that's not my opinion. That's, social science proves that out. But the elections that we hold are free and fair and open. And we, we also have in addition to the request on, on the merits, on the substance, there's a fact judgment embodied in a preambulatory clause in that resolution that our public engagement means a certain thing. And I think it would be very challenging for us, even if we disagree with that, to come to a, a different conclusion at this stage. I think we intended our process to tackle those two issues. What our public engagement said and what we should do in the ordinary course of our business. And I believe we might have arrived at a different, same or better answer had our process been allowed to run its course. But in light of the council's actions last night, I think we ought to view the question as having been settled. And I, and again, I say that notwithstanding the framing of the resolution, which I might ostensibly, which invites me maybe to reach a different conclusion. But I understand that language to be a function of the fact that council at this stage can't legally direct us to do anything on the plan. We have primary drafting and initial approval responsibility by state law. So I don't know that there's an alternative way to word that resolution and I don't view that choice as meaningful. I also think it is in fact a distinction without a difference. And I also think that declining to treat that issue as having been settled by council would be extremely dangerous to our process, our legitimacy and our final work product. I think it risks damaging our legitimacy with the public and with the council. I think it risks inflaming and emboldening, emboldening the resident groups who are opposing the process by anonymous mailer. And I think won't generally accept a changed plan on any set of terms. And I think it also risks the council sending our draft back. And we can't have any of those things happen. I just don't think we can afford it at this stage. So I'll, I'll stop talking.
Thank you, Commissioner Adams. Commissioner Norton.
Thank you. I may pick up a little bit where Commissioner Adams was heading from. To note first that I, I know that this endeavor has been presented as this is the planning commission's plan, but the reality is under the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, the city council always has the authority to send it back until they're happy that it also meets the needs of the city council. So it's the city council's plan as well. And we need, and, and should, I, I agree with Commissioner Adams. We need to and should take account of what the council is guiding us to do. It's, it's going to ultimately be their plan and it will, in a way, create a binding background that they have to follow through ordinance procedures. So that's an important thing to note. I want to push back a little bit on the residents who are claiming there was this horrible bait and switch. I mean, I think that's just an unfair characterization. This whole process has been laid out. Here's where we're thinking now, here's what we're doing. Lots of opportunity for change and, and I think it's just an, it's an unfair and unfortunate characterization. So you, you're lying to us. You've bait and switched us. The fact that we're talking about this now and contemplating changes just undermines that whole concept. So I'm a little bit frustrated with, with that perspective and that argument that's being made. Having said that, I totally get where folks are coming from and the fear that comes with not knowing what could be built right next door to me and, and how could, how disrupted could it be to my life? So I'm not in any way unsympathetic to folks' concerns about what this plan might mean for their neighborhoods. So we need to take that into account too. And as I recall, when we suggested maybe we should think higher, that was after hearing a whole lot of public comment from a whole lot of folks who were really pushing hard for us to try and increase density as much as possible. So I'm feeling a little bit whipsawed now that we're kind of just responding to every round of the latest complaints we're going to respond to. I don't really want to do that either. So here's where I'm heading. I think we should definitely take this resolution under advisement and take it seriously. I haven't even read the plan yet, so I'm a little bit reticent to say we should absolutely fix something in stone that we haven't really had a chance to read and think about how things are playing out. So that's making me a little nervous. And then the other thing is, maybe there will still be places where it does make sense to build a four-story structure instead of a three-story structure, even in a neighborhood and even in a way that the neighbors really wouldn't object. And why are we binding our, binding ourselves down unnecessarily at that point? So here's my friendly amendment, maybe? We don't have to say three, we don't have to say low rise means three stories, period. We could frame it as in the plan, three, we understand low rise to be gen, uh, by default, a three-story structure. But there may be instances, if the conditions are right and it fits in the setting, that you could go to a four-story structure or something. I mean, we could kind of make it clear, this is the general understanding of what this means, but there may be places and times where you could actually go a little bit higher that's not disruptive to the neighborhood. So now you're singling to folks, this is what we're envisioning. This is what the plan's calling for, but we're also baking in a little bit of ability to be flexible if the conditions are right. So I guess I would just throw that out and ask that, if we're going to kind of talk about concepts, that maybe that be floated as a way to approach this. Thank you.
Gotcha. Thank you, Commissioner Norton. We'll go to Commissioner Hammer Schmidt and then Weatherby.
Thank you. I guess just to start, just to acknowledge everything that's been said to us over the past few meetings. And just doing a lot of reflection, reflection. I regret, in some ways, any part that I've, I've played in the confusion that's occurred, that I feel like it's sort of marred this process a bit. I just want to really acknowledge the hard work of staff, the consultants, of us, council, and getting us to this first draft. The last few meetings have been kind of tough. And I feel like there, there's a lot of negativity around the plan. I made the mistake of reading some social media threads. And there's this negativity and this concern about processes circulating and it's really serving to undermine a lot of the hard work that's been done. So I'm sorry to sound to the consultants about all of this debate and distrust that we have heard recently. I fully agree with everything I just heard said. I watched the resolution part of the council meeting. I also appreciated what everyone on council had to say about the resolution, kind of on, on, you know, yay and yay and nay of it and what we should do moving forward. And so after all of the reflection and the listening I've done, I, I think from my perspective now, because of the public engagement that was done extensively, that was framed around three stories, four units. I think, you know, regardless of the loud voices that we're hearing right now and what they're saying, I personally like to go back and, and review the initial recommendations from the consultants based on all of that community conversation. And I'm still not, I'm not sure if I want to limit us in the actual plan with numbers at minimum. I think Mr. Mills was saying this last week, like it'd be good to describe pictures. I, I don't know how comfortable I am with numbers yet. I could get on board if that's the way that we go. But I guess for tonight too, I really appreciate what Dan said. The first thing I did when I opened the plan this afternoon was control F for stories. So I also saw that the draft doesn't include four stories and no limit to unit count. I, before, I don't know if this is possible, I would fully support Dan Strom and idea of like having four stories and no limit or no unit count limit is going to be another huge distraction once it's in print, once people see it in print. And if that is, if we want to pare that back at all, or if we want to just leave it vague, like having it say that so explicitly in the plan. I want to be able to have constructive conversation about other parts of what's in the plan too and not just be like so hyper focused on like this one sentence. And that's all I'll say about that for now. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Hammer Schmidt. We'll go to Commissioner Weatherby and then White.
So I have, these aren't, my comments aren't really framed very well right now because I haven't had much time to think about this. I mean, I've had a lot of time to think about this, but not so much time to think about this particular piece. But I guess one of my questions is, what implications if we say we're going to put this in the comprehensive plan that it's three stories or 35 feet? Because I live in a neighborhood that has a lot of three-story houses that were ostensibly 30 feet or some those experiences can be very different, like 30 feet from where? Three stories from where? Do garden apartments count? Do rooftop amenities count? Can we put solar on? Is solar part of the 35 feet? Where, like, there's a lot that goes around a three-story or 35 feet. And what do we put in the comprehensive plan that would make? That would make That would make sense? And how much does that inform the zoning regulations out the other side? And what ties our hands and what doesn't tie our hands? Like, three stories, you know, there's certain building norms, there's certain, um, safety norms, things like that, that, that come into that. I don't know what all those are. I do know that a 30-foot building height limit in our 4C can come up with lots of different buildings that look different, which I think is good. I mean, I, I think we don't want everything to look the same. Some of them are kind of squatty looking because 30 feet is not very tall, but, um, my house is taller than that. So that's kind of an interesting piece, but, uh, I'm sort of fine. I don't want people to get upset and say, I don't want anything over three feet. And everybody's trying to make my neighborhood into Manhattan and, you know, that's not worth. We want more people to be able to live in Ann Arbor. And I think what helps us get there is, you know, if this is a distraction, but if this is just one piece of, well, then what's the next thing? That's only one part of the council resolution. So there are other one, two, three, four, five other pieces that, and do we put all that in? And it seems weird because that's just one, one clump that suddenly gets put in the comprehensive plan that is not enforceable because zoning is actually what informs that and will people come? Because what happens now is people come and say, well, the comp, you know, our plans now say X, Y, and Z. And things have moved on and it doesn't, you know, we're not tied by that. We're actually tied by the zoning. So I do worry a little bit. I agree with Commissioner Adams that like we want people to believe that we are listening because we are listening. But it doesn't mean everybody's going to get exactly what they want. It means probably all of us will get a little piece of what we want and pieces that we don't want. And I just, I, I worry that this is just a kind of a straw man or that, that we're just saying, okay, we're going to put in the comp plan 35 feet. Or we're going to put in three stories and, and it's so not part of actually what moves this forward. And so I realize that's not super helpful, but it's just, um, like, sure, you know, we can say three stories. We can say 35 feet. I don't, I'm, I'm not wedded to one thing or another. Um, I think the reason we put, we even said 48 feet at any point was because that was the building code and it made sense to tie it to something other than, um, you know, just a random number. I mean, we could do 42. That's the answer to life, the universe and everything. Why, you know, like we're just sort of picking numbers. And, and if 30 or 35, 35 makes people happy, then fine. But how does that move forward and how do we put it into zoning? And what does that actually mean, I think is more important than the actual number of feet, I guess is kind of what I'm saying.
Thank you, Commissioner Weatherby. We'll go to Commissioner White.
Uh, thanks, uh, for this conversation and discussion. I appreciate, uh, Commissioner Adams opening and sort of framing. Um, I do want to start with a process question, which can be answered later in our conversation. It doesn't need to be answered, uh, immediately, which is, um, uh, Commissioner Adams mentioned that, um, tomorrow, this plan that we have had, uh, today's access to, uh, will be available to the public. And so my process question is if there are any either straw man decisions that we make or, uh, motion, not motions, because this is a work session or consensus, if you will, that we arrive at. How likely is that to get into, um, the plan that is scheduled to be released to the public, uh, tomorrow? And if it's not likely, where, what's the time horizon, uh, for a change like that? And how would we plan, uh, to communicate that to the public that those changes are coming? So, so that's sort of a process, um, sort of question for me, uh, going towards, uh, Commissioner Adams, uh, framing. I think, um, I'm going to sort of sit somewhere between, uh, uh, Commissioner Norton and Weatherby. Uh, actually Weatherby stole my joke, uh, that we should just go to 42, which is the meaning of life. And who, who has any objection with the meaning of life? It's sort of like, hey, does my life have meaning? The answer is 42. You can, uh, do with that what you choose. Uh, and so I, I think that that is a, um, a really nice, uh, compromise between 35 and 48, which is what we've been talking about. It sort of splits the difference and it allows for, um, reasonable size for, uh, stories. So if you had like a convenience store that might have a 14-foot, um, first story, but you could put two levels of residential on top of it, it's still, uh, to the sort of pedestrian view would look like a three-story, but it would actually be probably higher than 35 feet. And so I think in terms of the way that, um, uh, Commissioner Weatherby just framed, uh, sort of what does this look like? And then are we talking at grade? Are we talking, uh, sub, um, floors in order to meet these heights? Um, and, and so forth. And I think that a lot of that conversation shows up when we start to do these process changes through the UDC. As I looked at the, the comp plan, which by the way, Mr. Leonard, and I said this in the email, um, you were absolutely right. It is a beautiful document and, um, I appreciate, uh, the work that yourself and Senior Planner Michelle Bennett, uh, did on this. And I've noted that, uh, in my correspondence to you both. So, uh, thank you, uh, for that and thanks for hearing us and making, um, those adjustments in the plan. The thing that I, I also wanted to just note is in this one page, and I think this is important again to Commissioner Weatherby's observation. We're looking at 149-page document. This is one page of this whole, uh, sort of document. They have, uh, two subheadings, which I think are really helpful for us to frame our conversation, which is there are primary uses and secondary uses. And there may be a way for us to, uh, sort of split the baby, as it were, uh, using a bad, uh, biblical metaphor. And, uh, where we talk about primary uses and we articulate that to three stories and then secondary uses could go up to four stories, somewhere again between Weatherby and Norton's, um, observations here. And I think that that would fit very nicely, uh, in the plan. It would be a small addition, uh, to just sort of make that change. And we can still achieve what council has instructed or recommended. Um, when we, um, take up the UDC adjustments, where we will actually address height setback and placement, um, within, um, our zoning. So those are just some of my initial, uh, com, uh, comments and I'm, I'm looking forward to the rest of this conversation.
Thank you, Commissioner White. We'll go to Councilmember Dishman and Norton. Commissioner, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to pop in and, uh, again, even though, um, it isn't a beautiful work of philosophy. Um, I did want to go just highlight the language in this resolution, which there was a lot of, well, a lot of thought, even if it didn't, it doesn't always come out well. But I, but, um, it is not 35 feet or three stories. It's 35 feet allowing for three stories. So again, I don't want to put a spin on that, um, but I understand that as Commissioner Weatherby said, you know, so below grade, above grade, solar, you know? So allowing for three stories, um, is, uh, uh, so there might, uh, I, I think that it's good that we're having this discussion of what that could, what that little phrase means, but I think it might sound different if it said or. I think it affirms something in the way that it's worded. And then I just wanted to point out that the other stuff that's listed, because you, you mentioned, you know, are we supposed to put that in the plan? The city council requests that in implementing the low-rise residential land use category, planning commission consider these following tools. And, um, so that was clear, not meant, we weren't saying that it should go in the plan. And if, if, if we didn't make that clear enough, that meant in the zoning phase. And so we are after, you know, driving over the distinction between what goes in a plan and what happens at zoning. We are trying to rebuild the curb and say, you know, we're not asking for any of these kinds of specifics, but these things which we understand to be form-based, with the exception of probably one of them that isn't, doesn't sit easily with form-based. Um, but we, you know, again, it's this idea of context sensitivity. You can step things back. We've had this discussion. So the, um, and then one, so wait, period, break. Now the question of images is really interesting. So would council interpret the provision of images illustrating low-rise residential as a definition? It's an interesting question. I can't speak for council. But what I can say is that the images that are circulating, and there's a new set of images that are circulating because the neighborhood flyer has been revised. And, um, those images do not, the images often show a stark juxtaposition between a little thing and a tall, straight thing that's massy and a big box. And our request that these, these bullet points be taken into consideration when we zone is just asking, of course, let's use the tools that we know we have, such as setbacks. And, uh, you know, questions about how much of a lot, you know, how close to the, you know, do you go all the way up to the curb even though everything else is setback succeed? I don't know, but that's not for the comp plan to decide. That, that is for zoning to decide. And so I wonder what the effect would be if we had some images of places where, you know, there is, there is greater density integrated into a low-rise scale. Would that be comforting to people? Um, because the images that they are seeing are images that exaggerate and that are at odds with anything that I believe would come out of the zoning ordinances that we write to implement this plan. So those are then just three, uh, attempts to clarify intent here. And, and, and an open question about could we define with pictures since people are defining with pictures? The horror that they, uh, foresee, so.
Gotcha. Thank you, Councilmember Dash. We'll go to Commissioner Norton.
Um, just a quick follow-up. I, I do think, you know, I'm mindful of Commissioner Mills' comment at the last meeting that we're going to have to deal with this height question at some point. It makes sense to me to provide some guidance in the plan. It doesn't make sense to me to do it in a way that's so overly prescriptive that the plan becomes a zoning code. Um, general rule and statistics don't show any more zeros than you have confidence in of, of knowing the degree of specificity you have it, uh, for a particular analysis. I kind of shy away from wanting to use feet as a thing to specify in the master plan. I think that's too much detail. Um, I think it makes much more sense to talk in terms of stories. It gets the idea across clearly what you're talking about, but it doesn't bind you to somebody going out with a, with a tape measure and starting to argue about this, that, or the other. I mean, and maybe that, I don't even know if it's appropriate in zoning codes, but that's a whole nother discussion. So I guess I would urge us to think in terms of stories and not specify feet. I do want to come back. I think it's appropriate to say the plan envisions low-rise residential to be up, structures up to three stories, norm, normally up to three stories and only allowed to exceed that under exceptional circumstances. I think it's still worth giving us some room. There may be cases where actually a four-story structure would be fine. Let's not now kind of unduly bind ourselves, but I'm totally comfortable saying, but normally low-rise residential means a three or three and a half story structure. And I, I wouldn't lay it out with any more specificity in that for the master plan. So fine tuning a little bit. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Abrams.
Okay, unmuted. Almost forgot. Um, um, maybe a set of kind of scattered thoughts, um, but this is a working session, so hopefully that's okay. Uh, I am trying to carefully listen to everybody. I, and, and thoughtfully consider what you're offering and saying. Um, and it's been very helpful for me to hear your perspectives. I think I continue to be confused by the process, so maybe I'll look to, um, Mr. Leonard, um, or Ms. Kelly for a little bit of guidance here, if that seems appropriate. Um, but you know, when I, a, after our last meeting, I went back and re-watched, uh, that February working session. And it was very clarifying for me because I think some of the things that you were reminding us of, um, Mr. Leonard at our last meeting, I was also reminded of as I watched that session. Um, and for some reason it felt kind of like a blur or something, but anyway. But during that session, the consultant clearly states that the comprehensive plan is not the appropriate place to designate specific numbers or limitations, like the words come out of the mouth, come, come right out of their mouth. And I can provide you the timestamp so you don't have to scrub through the whole meeting if you want to hear that. I also understand that there's a, there's a, a reality about the way that this has unfolded, which means that perhaps we are being asked by the community to reassure them in some way that we are not intending to do something that they seem, that they feel is extreme, et cetera. I also feel that we have heard from a lot of people who are in support of four stories. And for some reason their voices aren't resonating or having the same impact or city council isn't feeling the same pressure, uh, um, and we could, you know, I haven't tallied, I don't know how to quantify what we're hearing, but it is not the case that there is a unanimous community view that 48 feet or four stories is too tall. Uh, so I don't, I, I, you know, I feel like, and, and also I just would say that the materials that I have seen from the community, um, who are, who are kind of organizing in, um, protest of the current comprehensive plan process and, uh, draft to come. The petition that is circulating actually asks for the city to stop, to restart the process. And so I know that that's not something we're discussing this evening, but I, but I do want to, I do want to consider the possibility that we are, that we would kind of go through like a really earnest and, um, thoughtful consideration of the input that we've heard and make a revision to this draft based on what we think we heard and find out that that's actually not the thing that's going to, going to make people satisfied with the plan. So I think the unfortunate thing is that the process has been politicized. I think you're right that all of the hard work has been totally undermined. And there's a lot in this plan beyond this one particular detail. I don't know what to do with that, but I think it's, it's, it's continuing to nag at me. And the other thing is that, you know, maybe this is the architect in me, but I have a really hard time kind of putting a pin in something like a limit on the number of stories without also talking. I mean, Commissioner Weatherby brought some of this up, but like open space requirements or setbacks or, uh, FAR or like, might it not be the case that sometimes we, that, that we would want to consider the possibility that floor area ratio would allow us to allow somebody to build something a little bit taller if it took up a quarter of the site? And something a little lower if it took up half the site? I mean, that's how these things work. So, um, and if you're, if you're somebody who has solar on your roof and you're worried about somebody blocking your solar, like that might actually benefit you to have something slightly taller, but taking up less of the site and in a location that doesn't block your sunlight. So I think it's really complex. These things are interdependent. Um, and I feel that, you know, the resolution is, is, uh, was just, was just voted on last night. It was added to the agenda today. And, and now I'm, now I'm going to be asked in a straw poll to approve or not the revision of a draft so that it can be released to the public tomorrow. Like if, if anything has ever felt kind of fa, fa, and, and the public complains that we're moving too fast. I think we've been doing this for a long time. I, I feel very secure that the process has not been rushed, but this feels to me a little bit rushed. Um, and I, and maybe my process question for Mr. Leonard and Ms. Kelly is, you know, a city council resolution that is not a directive, but is a request, but we're in a working session, which is not a place where we typically make decisions. And we usually preface our whole meeting by saying, we don't make decisions at this, these meetings. So like, are we actually now in a process where we're going to vote to, to grant a request from city council? Like kind of on a, very quickly, that makes me uncomfortable, but maybe I misunderstand what the goal of tonight is. Thanks.
Uh, thank you. Um, just for, uh, clarification, my understanding was that this was intended to be a discussion. Um, and perhaps the straw poll was intended to be, to gauge the And perhaps the straw poll was intended to be to gauge the temperature. I, I know Commissioner Adams had indicated that the request was to clarify and create kind of like a the word version 1.0 be as clear as possible. So, but my, my intent was just to have an open discussion as a, as a working session. I don't know how the staff felt about it, but that, that was my interpretation. But with that, we'll go to.
Can I just respond to that real quick? That is also my understanding. It just maybe feels like it's, it's difficult timing for us to have a discussion tonight to try to correct something that's going out tomorrow. So is there any leeway there? Is there any, is it even possible that the thing going out tomorrow is going to not say four stories? You know, so I, some feedback I think from planning would help maybe after Commissioner Adams speaks.
Okay. Yeah, we'll go to Commissioner Adams and then we'll go to Mr. Leonard.
I can wait. I mean, that's, that's an important question. So if staff has feedback on that, let's get that first.
So, thanks for all the discussion. I don't, I, I, I can't make those changes to the plan and release it tomorrow. My advice is that we release the plan as it's drafted. I think that we are, and to be clear, that, that plan is going to reflect the conversation that's been occurred so far at this, this body about four-story definition at this point of what low-rise residential is. The plan, I, I don't, I don't, I, I can't answer how long it would take. I don't think it would be. I don't think it would be that long to work with the consultancy and to try and modify it. But there are some, frankly, some, just some limited logistical implications. We only get so many drafts from as part of our contract. And I, I think that there's going to be a lot of observations and feedback about the plan that we're going to have to be communicating and figuring out the right way to tell the community that we're here, you know, we've heard that concern or we haven't heard that concern. And I think, I think that part of, part of the, I think there is a tension and there's a, a fear of the process. I've heard that fear expressed at this board. I've heard it experienced by public commenters. I think that there is a value to get this draft out to the public so the public has the opportunity to sink their teeth into it and see what is being proposed. And I think perhaps more importantly is we are, we're also on the verge of, we, we have scheduled a series of public engagement opportunities on this plan as well. The first one being in about two weeks. And I think releasing the plan in a timely fashion in advance of that is also fair to members of the community so that they have time to not only weigh in on this facet of the draft plan, but all of the facets of the draft plan in a reasonable timeframe. So. So in short, I, I would, my advice is that we release the plan as it's drafted. Again, I, if, if, if I'm not hearing unanimity by the planning commission on how to respond to this council request yet. And mainly because of that, it might be something more appropriate to actually take action on as opposed to any sort of discussion based. So I, my, my advice and my intention would be to proceed with releasing the draft. And I don't think that, I think that many people in our community are now really engaged on this issue and they're fully aware of the council resolution and the engagement opportunities to come forward. And I think they're going to be looking for signals from you through your review of the document at your regular sessions about what you, I think they're going to be looking for signals about what your intention is in that regard. And so that's my, that's my advice on it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Leonard. We'll go to Commissioner Hammer Schmidt and then, oh, wait, before Commissioner Adams, did you want to respond to that?
Yeah, I guess I would ask, I guess, yeah, I guess I would ask Mr. Leonard, what's stopping staff waiting a week and getting us to an actual meeting? And, and I guess the reason I'm asking is the outcome that I have the most concern about. Right? There's, there's many different ways that we could tackle the direction that we got like in less than 24 hours ago. Right? So it happened, I actually went to bed. So I listened to it on the way in to work this morning. It's a, council sessions are a bad podcast, but that's been my podcast unfortunately for a little while now. Most of, most of us have, most of us have had minutes with the draft. So I fully appreciate the fact that what I'm proposing tonight is both procedurally unorthodox and isn't something that a lot of folks have had a lot of time to think about. And by not a lot of time, again, minutes, right? Like most of us, I left work, I, I looked at two slides out of the, out of the draft and that's, that's all I've had. My concern is that it strikes me as, again, really problematic to get that kind of direction, which is very, in my opinion, very direct, very specific. Notwithstanding any concerns or reasons all of us might have reasonable, you know, reasonably to say, this is, we didn't intend to have a foot restriction in the plan. We didn't intend to get that granular. That's not how plans should be drafted. That's not where we were going to land. I mean, all that I think I agree with and it resonates with me very much. I hadn't made up my mind on any of those issues. So I, I hear all of that. My, my concern is that we really, like, again, once we release it into the wild, we're going to get another round of misinformation. We're going to get another round of reactions that thus far have surprised me and not surprised me depending on what we're talking about. But, but releasing the document into the wild before we've had a chance to react to what the council has done is going to get us a lot of confusion. It's going to get a lot of misinformation amplified. And if I burn a week to stop that, it feels like something we ought to consider doing. And I can't direct that. I'm a single vote. And I also can't make motions at this meeting. I know that. What I was contemplating procedurally is a, is some kind of straw poll consensus vote on striking, directing a change to a draft, which doesn't feel like a motion to me. Doesn't feel like a resolution to me. The draft is a draft. But there's a sentence in there and then there's a word in there that I think needs to change from four to three.
And a graphic would need to be changed.
If it's more than that, then maybe we, maybe it is premature. Cause I, again, I, I'm very sensitive to what you're saying. I, I, this feels like going into a brief minutes before it's filed in federal court and start ripping it up and making changes to it. And in that situation, I asked the court for more time, which is maybe what I'm suggesting, but I'll let other commissioners talk.
All right. Thanks, Commissioner Adams. What are, Commissioner Hammer Schmidt?
Well, originally what I was going to ask was a direct response or question to something that Mr. Leonard said about the council resolution, which I'll just ask that first. But does it, do we need to respond to it procedurally or can it just be something that we are considering as we review the rest of the plan and like make what I'm sure are going to be many more changes and nuances to things in there? Or do we have to have, do we have to have some sort of formal like response to accept it?
My, my read of that resolution is that your, any response that the planning commission chooses is going to be manifested in the document that you adopt and forward to them for consideration.
Okay. And then based on what Commissioner Adams just said, which I totally agree with, but I also understand that like we are planning to release this tomorrow and you guys have a whole schedule. Is there any way to asterisk or write a paragraph that is like, we know this is in here, there have been, this was written before, like the past two months of like conversation like this, this, along with everything else in the plan is under review. So that there isn't this like outcry of like, we told you that it was going to say four stories in the plan and now it's here in the plan. Like, I don't know if there's any way to like soften it all without having to go back and like change the whole thing right now, since we know that there are going to be other changes, but just like as it's pushed out, like acknowledging what, you know, the, the feedback that we've been getting and the conversations that we've been having over the past several weeks.
Yeah. This is a draft plan, so we can definitely present it in that way. But I, that's, I guess, to go back to my, my thoughts on this is that I don't think you know all the issues in this document yet that you're going to hear that feedback. This, this will definitely be one of them. But there will be others. And, and so I get it that, you know, there's, there's definitely a momentum with this one, I think. Well, I see a momentum based on the city council resolution. I'm even hearing some of that here, which is distinct from previous conversations, but but I, yeah, I, I think that there will be other, there will be other aspects of this plan that you're going to be wrestling with. And so I, I, I don't sit here knowing exactly the best way to communicate to somebody who calls me or emails me saying like, I thought, I thought that council passed this resolution saying this, but this plan says this. And, you know, off the cuff, my response would be that's why we're sharing this draft. We're sharing feedback. The city council definitely had a perspective on this. The planning commission is going to consider that in the context of the ultimate version and edits that they suggest. And so.
And maybe it's that. I like what you said. Like maybe it's prefaced, maybe it doesn't have to be specific to the like four-story issue, but maybe it's just like, it just so it's clear to people that like, things are going to change in here.
The draft document.
On page fifty-one and elsewhere. So.
But to be clear, I, I think I, I anticipate you as the commissioner are going to wrestle with these aspects of the plan. There are going to be other aspects of this plan I guarantee you're going to wrestle with as well. And so I don't think it makes sense to every time we identify one of those to do like this incremental adjustment at some point. I just think it makes sense. Let's get this, let's share it, let's let everybody. That was, that was our intention to give you a little bit longer window, to give the public a little bit longer window. We are, we are going to be subject to criticism of what the plan says and what it doesn't says in a lot of facets that I probably can't even predict at this point. So. But I think talking about the process and the transparency, I think that's a good step for us to start sharing that with the public.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Weatherby.
Yeah, I think one thing about this, and I've been through a fair number of these in my years participating in city council and is if this gets people reading the comprehensive plan, yay! Because we do not want to implement something that ten people have looked at. You know, if we want to implement something that people do get riled up about, that people have had conversations about, that people have talked to their neighbors about. And again, everybody isn't going to be happy when this is over. But if we can feel like we actually have gotten people to really talk about it and look at it and look at this documents and think about this stuff and really participate in planning of their city. And for the people who are outside the city who would like to live here, that they see a document and they hear the arguments and it goes on next door. And if it all quiets down because we put, we say, oh, you know, everybody was right, it's three stories. And then like last night at city council, there was, there were very few people talking about this. There were very, you know, we've had no, we have no comments today to, in our packet of letters to, we want people to participate. We want people to get riled up. It, it should be productive. It won't all be productive. But, you know, getting people to talk about this and fine, if that means people are going to be mad, then be mad, but like participate and read it and look at it. And to Leonard Leonard's point, people are going to be upset about a lot of this stuff or happy about a lot of it. These are big documents. It's about planning a city. And I think, you know, if it makes sense to change a number, fine, but like, I don't, I don't think it makes sense. I think we release this. We say, hey, what do people think? And if, if there is some sort of consensus, which I think to Commissioner Abrams' point, we have not actually heard consensus yet from the community. And we say, you know, we're going to include community, we're going to include the city council, we're going to include our perspectives, we're going to include the planning, the, you know, this is, we're not at the beginning of this process by any means, but it's the beginning of something that people can actually hold and look at and talk about. And I think that that's good. And I think we let people do that. And if it's, if it's good or bad, that gives us a point to talk about. We don't want this all to happen the day we approve it or the day council approves it, because we want this conversation to happen as soon as possible or all these conversations to happen as soon as possible.
Thank you, Commissioner Weatherby. All great comments. I think we've heard from pretty much everybody at this time. Again, my intent here was to help facilitate kind of an open discussion about this, not necessarily to have like a definitive response, but that, Commissioner Norton, we'll, we'll go to you and then I'll add my thoughts.
Just, just a quick question, just to be sure. I know we have Mr. Leonard two, two revisions, kind of one big revision and then a fine tuning revision and then that, and then, I mean, the plan is that's kind of where we're headed to produce a draft for city council consideration. Right? So I, I have to say, I'm just a little, I just keep him continually struck by how mad everybody is about the draft plan when we haven't even seen the draft plan yet. It hasn't gone out yet. So, and I'm mindful of what the, the message the city council is sending to us and we absolutely should consider it. I do feel it. And I get the concerns that are motivating it and that folks are unhappy about, but I'm also feeling like, yeah, now is the time for us to cogitate on all of the feedback we're getting and really figure out what makes the most sense for the community. So send it out and let it know that it's a draft. We've been hearing people. We understand some folks are unhappy, but now's the chance to give us good reasonable, reasoned feedback. And we, that's what the whole purpose of putting out a draft to be considered and and contemplated is all about. So I'm, I'm rambling. I'll stop rambling.
No, thank you, Commissioner Norton. We'll go to Mr. Leonard.
So along those lines, I just wanted to, while we're on this topic, preview, cover, horn. So a couple of reminders are new information for you and anybody who is watching. We are moving the content of the project page to the city's new engagement hub. You're going to find that at engage.a2gov.org. That is a new website that the city uses shockingly for public engagement rollup of all, a lot, a wide variety of opportunities on a wide variety of projects. And so while I regret the move of this significant project from one location to another, I think it is a tool that we have now that we didn't have before, that is a great tool for us communicating upcoming schedules, posting documents. And you'll see the videos, you, when we post it, we've migrated all the videos of past meetings related to this process. So that will be the mechanism by which we are sharing the, the drafts. We have three scheduled public engagement meetings now. They will be held on Thursday, April twenty-fourth at the Westgate Branch Library, on Wednesday, April thirtieth at the Mallett's Creek Library, and on Wednesday, May seventh at the Traverwood Library. Once we notice that publication of that project card on that engagement site, all of those and specifics of those meetings will be there with addresses, times. Those are all scheduled for three to seven o'clock PM. Trying to provide some window of opportunity, both workday and post-workday for people. The, we anticipate that those will be open house formats, very similar to some of the workshops that were held previously last year. We will be coming back to you and talking to you about our more specific plans for that. Generally, we're going to be presenting some background aspects of the plans and we're really going to be focusing in on the goals and the future land use map as opportunities for specific questions or engagement to the public. And we'll be sharing those with you. Chair Lee has the bylaws appointed power to call special meetings of this board. And accordingly, you have already received some communication from my colleague, Michelle Bennett, trying to start to schedule some of those additional times for meetings. Just so you know, once we get those scheduled and locked in with locations, we're trying to make sure we can pinpoint locations. We've got some conflicts with the council chambers. As soon as those are confirmed, I'm going to be calling on Commissioner Lee to ask him to call. As soon as those are confirmed, I'm going to be calling on Commissioner Lee to ask him to call those as official special meetings. So, um, that's just a little bit of process. I wanted to warn both Chair Lee and the rest of you that once we get those confirmed, that'll be the nature of getting those on the calendar and published and shared with the public.
Can I just pop in and I have something that's on April seventeenth from three to seven at Westgate. So that's a different, that's community planning office hours.
Yeah, that is, uh, that is simply, uh, we are, that is the first pilot of just, um, me sending some of my team out into the community for people to access us in a different way. That's where an opportunity for people to come in. And if they want to ask about a project this interview, they want to ask about the comprehensive plan, they want to talk about a fence permit. Um, that's just an opportunity where we're going out in the community, um, as another way for people to access information about our processes and procedures.
All right. Thank you for the clarification. We'll go to Commissioner Adams.
Yeah, just a couple of quick things since I was the one who asked, well, again, I don't know if I was the only one. I, I know that I was the one-on-ones who asked for the discussion and I sort of kicked it off with a big old speech. So I, in terms of organizing my own thinking, I mean, I understand there's not really a, a consensus view at this point, but at the same time, folks are still catching up to what happened last night and folks also haven't read the draft and I haven't either. So, um, it makes sense to reconsider this at some later date. And I've also heard everyone, uh, uh, if there's been a consensus tonight, it's been around, let's get the draft out and let people start reacting to it and engaging with it. And that seems also, um, reasonable if that's where folks are. And, and I, it's, I also understand everyone's, um, lack of having fully baked thoughts on things that are again, hours, uh, events that are hours old and documents that just hit our inboxes earlier today. Um, there, there were two quick things I wanted to mention as well. Um, you know, I, I, at the last act, actual meeting had made a comment about wanting to see engagement materials in advance at, at regular sessions. And after some discussions with staff, I want to clarify that it's going to be a lot of, and, and Mr. Leonard and and Hank and others sort of pointed out to me that that might not be feasible, that there might be a need for staff to move more nimbly than that in order to facilitate the aggressive, you know, timeline in terms of doc, draft turns and public engagement sessions and that type of thing. And so I, I didn't want that request to stand in the way of that. So it's going to be a as, as possible type of pre-review with us in advance. And I think that's the right balance. And then finally, on the engagement summary that was circulated earlier, a, a question for Mr. Leonard, is that going out tomorrow with the draft or is that something we can still comment on? Cause I, I had some, you know, questions and concerns about it and I, I, that was one that I just wanted to ask what your timing is.
Um, I should also know how to use them. My apologies. Um, uh, my intention was to publish that as well. Um, uh, your question was around, I think some of the, uh, analysis of that. Um, I'm happy to, um, follow up with our, our team on sort of some of those conclusions. And you had already also asked about some of the more detailed data that's behind that summary document. And so, um, I honestly have to tell them, I don't know how close that is. That is an intention to post all of that eventually. Um, let me see if I can get those questions answered before we publish that, um, uh, that summary.
You know, one of the things that I, I want to be clear about in there too, right? There, I think, as I understood staff's comments to us and the council, there are quantitative judgments that staff has made, right? Judgments that are based on the data from the sessions and survey and everything else. And then there are qualitative judgments, right? Looking at everything from narratives to, you know, all kinds of things that, that, all kinds of different forms of feedback that aren't really reducible or, or quotable. So one of the pieces of feedback that wasn't a question was, I just, the, the document could be more clear in my mind about, because to me, the judgment that staff makes that are qualitative have just as much weight as the judgments that are quantitative. And in some cases, perhaps more so, because there's a lot of feedback that you got over the course of an entire year, that again, can't be distilled down to a number. And I didn't want to sell any of that short. And, and it's at points in the document, it felt, it felt like it, it does, or we gloss over it or we skip over it. And what I was hoping that we could do if, you know, those, those judgments could be teased out and made more explicit. Um, and then differentiated between the judgments that are quantitative more clearly, I think that'd be helpful. There were, um, you know, the, the survey also felt like there were some leads buried. You know, if you look at the right-hand side, we've got some bar charts that to me are very helpful in terms of understanding the results. We're only talking about some of the results. And I think we need to take a second look at that. Um, and then finally upfront, I think an executive summary might be helpful as well, right? What are the key? What are the key components of the engagement? Cause that, that came through, I think in the public presentations. Seventy percent around these dimensions and broad agreement around these ideas. I think if you read the whole deck, you get it. But I think upfront, if we could pull that up, that, that I think would be really helpful. Then I've got those other questions that I sent you that are more granular.
Well, no, uh, Commissioner Adams, I really appreciate that. And I, I think it's, um, I really like how you frame that. And I think it's a good reminder for all of us that, uh, community planning is, um, for, and may perhaps on lack of graceful term, it's a messy process, right? The, the engagement that we do is often, it's, it's not, it's definitely not a one-to-one all the times. We are having to process both quantitative and qualitative and we have to, um, we look for themes at times and, and, um, so I really appreciate the way you've, you've framed that. That's what we are trying to do with this plan. I think that's what you're going to be trying to do with this plan as you go through your review of that. And so I'll take a look at that document and see what I can do to sort of help clarify that.
All right. Thank you. I think we've, um, heard from most folks. I wanted to do a quick recap for staff's help on kind of what I heard. Um, I heard again from council, it was a request to, um, determine thirty-five feet. I, we heard some compromises on three stories, keeping it a little bit more, um, I guess. Well, vague's not the right word, but more general, like approximately three stories, um, or, and, and also potentially not keeping a cap, but saying up to three stories, um, unless otherwise necessary. Um, so I think I, I also heard that the importance of, um, transparency, this, this idea that, hey, this is the plan as it currently stands right now. Um, and so that let's get feedback and that, um, inclusive engagement and active engagement is, is certainly a positive thing that we want to continue to encourage. And so, I mean, I think that this is, as, as we kind of discussed, this is one point out of a lot of pages. And so we'll have some time to kind of engage with it. And so procedurally, um, uh, Mr. Leonard, you did lay out kind of like where we are in the entire process. We have two revisions, one substantive and like pretty big. And then one that's kind of like cleanup clerical. Um, so I, I wanted to just kind of recap what I heard. Again, no emotions being made. This was intended just simply to be a platform for us to have a, a discussion about kind of like what, what's coming down. And I know it, we're moving quickly. Um, but it's intended to meet the timeline of student engagement as well, um, given some of the feedback we got. So hopefully that is a good overview.
Am I the only one that lost Commissioner Lee's?
No, I never, he's back now.
Okay. Oh, I'm back. No. Okay. I, I, what I was, I was finishing up with like Mr. Leonard McKelly. Um, is there anything else that you guys wanted to add, um, with respect to what we heard generally?
Me.
Okay, cool. And then, uh, council member Dish, I think you have the final word. I would like to get you all out of here by nine o'clock. So.
I know. Okay. Wait, it's nine now, but maybe I could.
No, it's all right. You get the, you get the final words.
I want to say thank you very much for this great discussion. Um, it's really, what I really appreciate is how supportive you all are of the council. And that, you know, you were very thoughtful about thinking about what you would like to do in response to this request, which seems like the right thing to me. Um, I wanted to, uh, ask if in the engagement, it could be highlighted. I really liked the wording on page one hundred and eight. The plan established that a building height of four stories is an appropriate scale for these areas. However, further analysis is needed to identify additional measures for preserving neighborhood scale, which will be explored during the rezoning process. And if, when this low rise, I do, I just don't want all the engagement to focus on the low rise because there's so much more in this plan. And that is a wonderful sentence. And it could be said at the engagement sessions, we're looking for feedback on your, on the idea that four stories is an appropriate scale for these areas. I want you to note the following sentence, which says that further work will be done in zoning. And I want to let you know that council's given us some feedback and they don't think that's the appropriate scale. I mean, you could say that and give council a voice in this feedback process. And, you know, maybe we speak with a little more authority, but we are part of a feedback process. So those were my, oh, also, and by the way, I cannot find the comp plan on, uh, engage A two gov dot org.
I don't think it's up yet.
Tomorrow. Okay.
Tomorrow. Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's the coordinate I need to give them and then my constituents, and then they have to page through all the other projects that are up there. I mean, shouldn't the comp plan just be first in neon? And it should have graphics that jump out at you and blind you and give you a fit.
Get to page through all those other engagement opportunities.
They get to. My constituents are very impatient, but okay. Um, thank you.
We'll have a clear, salient call to action.
If it makes you feel better, Councilmember Dish, I know that when this goes live tomorrow, there's about seven or six or so categories in the hub and we have tagged it under every category except for public art. I think we left it out of that one. Little too tangential, but all roads should lead to Rome. And, uh, you can always search comp plan.
Thank you. And Commissioner White, actually.
Uh, uh, just on the agenda, um, Chair Lee, the published agenda has a final public comment. And I think you indicated that we were going to immediately adjourn. And I just wanted to note that the published agenda has that there. So I don't, uh, you can change it because it's your meeting, but, uh, if people are expecting to speak, I want them to know that it's going to change.
Got it. No, 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 that's solid. Yeah. Yes. Ms. Kelly, while I pull up the agenda.
I did check our bylaws earlier today. We did not get a chance to get an extra weigh-in from the city attorney, but as it's written, all meetings without exception have two public comment periods and a three-minute time period, which does not actually give us very much wiggle room to rearrange public commenting at other meetings. It may be something that if, uh, you all continue to see a need to manage that time, we would need to look at an update to your bylaws. I also, speaking of your meetings, wanted to just share for the members of the public who are joining us that we are looking at a five-thirty PM start for your April fifteenth meeting. And we do intend, uh, to put an updated calendar on your agenda, just to clarify, instead of calling special meetings, you would be able to adopt an updated calendar with revised times for the, the near term to accommodate the comp plan.
Gotcha. Sounds good. Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Um, we will go to public comment. Sorry, guys. I'm gonna get chatted here probably, uh, when, whenever public comment ends. Um, last thing that I just wanted to note is this is the community's plan. We are all here volunteering to make sure that we have inclusive, thoughtful discussions about this. And so, um, it, we really want to hear, uh, and have more engagement on this process. So, uh, with that, we are going to, our final public comment. With that, we are going to go with, I believe, Mr. Goodman. I see your hand up. Mr. Goodman, you have three minutes.
Hi there. Um, I do appreciate having the opportunity to speak to you. Um, I actually want to go back to the, uh, comprehensive plan, or sorry, the capital improvement plan discussion. Um, so I'm going to start with this specific and then get general. The specific is the, um, underpass underneath East Medical Center and the MDOT rail situation. So I know that we heard somehow from MDOT that they were planning to do some holistic safety study project, whatever. I believe that safety project ended up being MDOT's proposal to build a massive fence cutting, you know, the city in half that resulted in a resolution that's literally resolution against MDOT's proposal to build a wall through Ann Arbor that was passed by city council and led to MDOT sort of pulling back or at least agreeing to delay this uh, project and, and seek more collaboration with the community. I think it's really important to think about this because if MDOT had built this fence without considering local needs, they could have built a physical barrier to the city ever installing this pathway that we have this sort of long-term aspiration to build. Um, and so that's why, that, that's really like why I came to you uh, ear- earlier this year. I think I'm the one who provoked this whole discussion. Um, because I think we need to surface these aspirations publicly and, and visibly, even when we don't have a way to fund them. And so I, the suggestion I've got for you is if we're not going to include them in the six-year capital improvement plan itself, which, you know, I do, I do kind of understand the rationale for not doing that. So one thing city staff has done an incredible job of over the last few years is creating an interactive GIS map online, showing all of the projects in the capital improvement plan. And so this is sort of a case of like, no good deed goes unpunished. I would really love it if they would add a layer to that map or create a, a separate view that includes all of the on-hold projects as well. Um, just so that folks can see, you know, what the city would love to do if we are given the, the funding and the opportunity and the clearing of regulatory hurdles. Because I think it's really important that everyone, members of the public, other agencies, you know, anyone who wants to know, be able to see, you know, we would, we want to do this thing in the future so that we can prevent exactly this sort of, the conflict that, that could foreclose these opportunities for us. Um, that's all for now. Thank you as ever for your really thoughtful discussions tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman. Appreciate your comment. Do we have any other callers that would like to speak at this time? With a few warm seconds. Okay, with that, out of the five Mississippi, hopefully okay, with that, we will close public comment for tonight. Thank you for joining us today and we really do appreciate your participation. We want to continue to get that momentum of engagement throughout this entire process. So with that, we are moving on to our final item, which is adjournment. So with that, thank you everyone for your thoughtful discussion. Have a good night.